The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
... that would be applicable to this matter. I did circulate a proposed draft containing my changes, and I'll just, for the record, bring them to everyone's attention. So if you look at 45.1.6, actually, no, I was going to change that, but I didn't. If you look at 45.1.6.2, instead of should, I deleted should and inserted shall. And also, on the second line, I also deleted should and inserted shall. So it would read, "All dumpsters shall be free of holes, rust, and damage that would create a nuisance or hazard to the general public. Dumpsters smaller than 10 yards shall have appropriate covers and be leak-proof in order to prevent contamination of groundwater or discharge of liquids into storm drains." And the only other change I made was to 62.3.3. I inserted some introductory language reading, "Appropriate care must be taken so that exposed storage areas, machinery, garbage dumpsters, service areas, truck-loading areas, utility buildings, and structures are screened from the view of abutting properties and streets using plantings, fences, masonry, natural material, and/or methods compatible with the goals of this regulation." And I deleted the clause here that says screening shall be a minimum of six feet in height. I deleted that just because there is a master general law that speaks to the height of fences and screenings, and I just didn't want us to be inconsistent with that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on these edits, or if everybody's good with that, Councilor Danza?
Mr. Chairman, I would just suggest, to be consistent, that 45.1.6.3, we should delete the word "should" there and replace it with "shall."
Yes, I think that's a good suggestion.
Other than that, I had nothing else.
Okay. Anybody else? No? I don't know if anyone wants to make a motion to amend the petition to reflect those edits?
Counselor Zephyr.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and if anyone wants to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'll go to my committee. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, any other changes or questions or anything?
No, no, I think this looks great.
Okay, Counselor Cormier?
I have nothing else. Thank you very much for your hard work. It looks good.
Yep, no problem.
And I think if there's anything that comes up, it wouldn't be major. So, you know, we have a couple of more opportunities to fix anything, but I think it looks good.
Okay, thank you. And I just assure anyone from the public that this is, these changes really only apply to anyone who's going to be coming in brand-new. It doesn't apply to dumpster locations that are already currently in use. So we're not affecting any existing businesses. So with that, I guess I have to go to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, I would close the public hearing, and we can take this up later on.
Very well, thank you. All right, we're at past 6:29, so we can take up 9-22. Is the acting chairwoman of public service ready to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 9-22, Verizon, New England, requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and manholes with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way or ways. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place two, four-inch conduits on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Manhole 72A, located on the northerly side of Mechanic Street, and running in a southerly direction down Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 241 feet to a point, and then westerly to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place one, four-inch conduit on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Pole T dot three, located on the easterly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue, and running in a northwesterly direction along Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 120 feet to a point on the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Howe Street, place one, four-inch conduit on Howe Street, beginning at Pole T dash dot two, located on the northernly side of Howe Street, and running in a westerly direction down Howe Street, a distance of approximately 209 feet to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. The reason for this is to place conduit to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. This was on our last meeting for a public hearing. We continued it to this evening. Can I ask, is there anyone here from Verizon?
Yes.
Sir, if you would just step to the podium?
I just want to note for the record, before the gentleman speaks, that Counselor David Cormier has abstained as a result of a conflict with his employer.
Good evening.
Sir, if you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Bill Wallace, representing Verizon on this petition. There was a question, I believe, at the last hearing about the DPW folks being involved and whatever, and the council wanted Verizon to meet out there. That, in fact, took place last Thursday. A representative from the DPW was a man named John Roseberry.
Roseberry.
And they discussed the project. He wasn't, you know, nothing came up that he was against, from my understanding. This project would more than likely, at this time, take place in the spring. And I believe he was going to get back through the DPW to you folks to let you know that they had been out there to review it. Take any questions?
Does any member of the council have any questions? Okay. Mr. Wallace, I don't have any questions at this time. I will open up to the, I believe, the third member is Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
And if there's no other questions, I can put this out to the audience, if there's anybody here. Mr. Wallace, thank you. Are there any members here who would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? For a second time, are there any members of the public who would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? And for the third and final time, is there any members of the audience that would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, I would ask that this public hearing be closed.
Thank you. I'll just note for the record, first of all, Council Angelini wants to be recognized.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, ma'am, chief. Thank you. Just really quickly, I just like to thank the assistant clerk for following up. I know a DPW director responded with a one liner, it's a man of few words, but you were kind enough to follow up to get a better explanation on that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I will, Mr. President, and I can just summarize the email briefly.
For the record, that would be most appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is a series of emails that went from Raymond Racine, who runs the DPW, to Diane Reardon, our assistant clerk, which basically, in summation, says that they met with Verizon at the area to be worked on, and he has no issues with the work that's going to get done.
Okay, so just as Mr. Wallace indicated, there was a meeting, and they came to a meeting of the minds, which is always nice. All right. Unless there's any other member of the council that wants just to weigh in, I guess we could close this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right, back to legal affairs, and Counsel Dombrowski, 10-22.
10-22, Revolutionary Clinics II, Inc. seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment used at 130 Pioneer Drive in Leominster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter 22, Article 18 Marijuana Facilities, Section 22-105. Mr. President, I'm not going to open this public hearing. The applicant, given that we've got a couple of absences, including temporarily the Ward One absence, where this facility is being proposed, the applicant has sent a request asking us to continue, not continue, to reschedule the public hearing. So I believe we've done that for, or we need to do that.
Okay.
To set that for November 22nd.
All right.
Should we do that now, vote on that now?
I think we should.
Okay.
Counsel Angelini.
Oh. Mr. Chairman, if I may, it would be possible for perhaps the clerk to reach out. When I was reviewing the documents, if you go to the signature page of the recent agreement, it is page 20.
Yep.
I believe it says...
Microphone.
It's the stamp.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Stamp obscures the signature.
Okay.
So if we could...
You want to get a clean signature page? I think we can make that request.
Thank you. That's it, that's all?
Yep.
Okay, so you want to check with the committee on, we're going to essentially reschedule the public hearing.
Right, for November 22nd. I don't know if the clerk has a suggested time?
I'd recommend 6:30 PM.
6:30, all right.
And Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, that's okay with you?
I'm actually abstaining from any discussion on this particular petition due to conflict.
Okay, fine. Counselor David Cormier?
That is fine with me.
All right, so the remaining members of the committee are in favor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those who are voting recognize the usual manner to continue, or continue, reestablish the public hearing for 11:22 at 6:30 PM. Say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, so by a vote of six to zero, we've got a new public hearing. All right, moving on to, what's that? We've got to go 6:45. Okay, we gained some ground. So we're going to have to go into dead air for a few minutes to, before we establish our public hearing on 12-22.
Okay.
It's like a TV timeout for a football game.
The Leominster City Council, petition 12-22. City Council President Padanza and Vice President David Cormier request to revise Chapter 1, Section 1-11, entitled "Wards in Precincts." Essentially, we're reprecincting updates to the map. This ordinance will become effective January 1st, 2022. Do I have to read this? Oh, I don't?
No, you can summarize it. Just summarizing is fine.
Well, I can, where...
You may just want to reference that the, yeah, if you want the city clerk to...
Yeah, I would defer to the city clerk. I think she'd probably do a better job.
So essentially, it's every 10 years, we have our federal census, and as such, we have to reprecinct, which means, once we get our new number of people, we have to make sure they're spread out evenly without the city, inside the city. This time, we did have some changes, so there has been some slight changes in Ward One, and it affected all the other wards slightly. So it's about 600 people who will be moving within their own ward from an A, B, to C type of deal. They will get notification at the end of the year. It will come out in a postcard format, and we'll have lots of literature on it as well.
Okay. And this is something that's required by the state, yeah. I'll first go to my committee. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, any questions or comments?
Yes, I just want to get some more detail from the clerk. So does it only impact people who live currently in Ward One, live and vote in Ward One?
No.
Or are people from Ward Two shifting? I'm really trying to understand what the shifts are.
Yeah, so I have a map that I can show as well. So what essentially happened is one grew the most. In order to balance that out, we had to start pulling. And, yeah, so we made one smaller, and then pulled from other spots to respread it out. So, for example, 1A shrank down in size on the map, even though the population grew, and then that affected B, which affected C, so we had to redo some of 2. And then in the center of town, it grew a little bit near 3. So then 4 and 5 took a little bit of those pieces. So essentially, there was a major shift, and everything pulled from the center away.
Okay.
I have the old map and the new map to compare with overlays, too, if you want.
Are those posted publicly?
When we finish this ordinance, it will all be up online.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All designed by the state, right?
Mm-hmm.
In the end?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what it is.
Sure.
It's hard to explain without visually seeing it absolutely yet.
And the third member, Counsel Cormier?
No, I'm all set. I did see the map up in the city clerk's office, and I reviewed the language as best I could, and it appears to all be in order to me, and, of course, the state, I guess, according to the city clerk, they had a video of them going through all the language and comparing it to the map. Is that correct? So, you know, it's been pretty thoroughly gone over, and I believe it should all be in order, so.
Okay. Any other city councilors have any questions or comments? Counsel Padanza?
I just would reflect, to be accurate, that there are some people that are going from one ward to another, right?
A very small handful, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Anyone else? I'll go to the public. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 12-22? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 12-22? And third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against petition 12-22? Seeing none, at this time, I would close the public hearing.
Very well.
The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person signed up this evening is our Chief Aaron Kennedy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief Aaron Kennedy, Lemmister Police Department. Speaking on behalf of the old business section, C-56, the civil service exemptions that you guys all voted for us to get it moving out of civil service. Me and the captain are here. We both agree that, you know, thanking you first is the best thing we need to do for the support you guys showed us. We all in agreement that it's the best thing for the department. My short time, it's been over a year, so it's going to become a record, probably. We've done a lot of good things for the department. A lot of positions were acting when I took over. A lot of it was under the prior administration, too. But with the help of the mayor and the new comptroller, we were able to make a lot of people permanent, except for my position and the captain's position. I encourage, if a letter could be sent out to Rep. Higgins about the status and how we hopefully get it going, because like the town of Swambs got, did the entire police department and fire department about a month prior. It kind of hesitated in the same way ours has, but then it pulled ahead, and the governor signed it like a week or two for them to both be out. So if it gets, a letter gets it moving, it'd be greatly appreciated, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. We also have Captain John Frayer.
Good evening, John Frayer, Lemmister Police Department. I also just want to say thank you for your support with this bill. Really appreciate it. The bill's been stagnant since July 7th, hasn't moved since then. Hopefully, it picks up in the legislature and they go through, so it doesn't die in this session. But I just want to let you know, when it comes to police reform and, you know, the essential, you know, the core of police reform, accountability and things like that, we're on top of it. We've done everything that we've had to do on our end. We're pressing forward. We're meeting all of our deadlines. We're meeting all of our requirements and things like that. So hopefully, you know, this goes through, and I can stay where I am. So that's really it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Captain. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council this evening in the public forum? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed. And we'll open the meeting in just about a minute. Rise and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take a roll call of the councils in attendance, starting with Councilor Nabrowski. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Present.
Councilor Angelini?
Present.
Councilor Aringer?
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Councilor David Cormier?
Present.
I shall be recorded as present. We have seven members of the council in attendance this evening. Next, we move on to approval of records. Does the Chairman of Records have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, I reviewed the minutes of October 25th, 2021, and find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
That may be done. Moving on to communications from the mayor, starting with C-28.
C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $100,000 be made to the purchasing contracted services line, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding to demolish two structures that are unsafe located on Birch Street and Lincoln Terrace.
C-28 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
C-28 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-29.
C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the police overtime account, the same to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding overtime demands.
C-29 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-29 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-30.
C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $588,235 be made to the Barrett Park project, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding Barrett Park project, $400,000 to be reimbursed from the grant over a two-year period, and $188,235,000 will be covered by the city.
C-30 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-30 has been given regular course. Thank you very much. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda.
13-22, Ward 2 City Councilor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces," to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 163 Seventh Street in the city of Lemmister.
13-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Lemmister Police Department.
13-22 has been given regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the police department.
We'll still have to establish a hearing on that as well.
Oh, okay. I guess the suggested hearing is November 22nd at 6:50 p.m. Anybody have any discussion on that date and time? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing on 11/22 at 6:50 p.m., please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is thusly established. Moving on to 14-22.
14-22, Ward 2 City Councilor Pauline Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division 1, Generally, Section 13-29, entitled "Handicap Parking Spaces," to include a reserved handicap parking space on a public way at 110 Fifth Street in the city of Lemmister.
14-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Lemmister Police Department. And as with the previous hearing, we need to establish, the previous petition, we need to establish a public hearing. The suggested hearing date is November 22nd, 2021 at 6:51 p.m.
Okay, you heard the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs to give 14-22 regular course with a referral to the traffic agent and establish a public hearing on November 22nd at 6:51 p.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is established by a vote of 7 to 0. Moving on to 15-22.
15-22, Julio Ramos, Traffic Officer, Lemmister Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-33 of the revised ordinance entitled "Schedule of Parking Fines," regarding under Group B, $25 fine. Please include the offense of obstructing bicycle lane.
15-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Lemmister Police Department. And if we could schedule a hearing for November 22nd, 2021 at 6:52?
You have 6:51 on the agenda. You might want us to...
2, yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so you heard the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs to provide regular course for 15-22 with a referral to the traffic agent and establish a public hearing on November 22nd at 6:52 p.m. Any discussion? Councilor Angelini?
Just a quick, if I may, I believe that communication from Officer Ramos stated that he hoped that the city solicitor's office could review that before the council acted upon it. I can, just hold on one second, pull that up. Yeah, the second paragraph says currently there is... Excuse me. Currently, there is law which addresses the standing or parking of a motor vehicle in a designated bike lane. It is Chapter 89, Section 4D. It is the petitioner's request that this amendment be reviewed by the city's attorneys before forwarding this petition to the city council for review, comment, and approval. So I'm just wondering if that's been done? Were we setting a...
Not yet.
Hasn't been done. I mean, it's done when we pass any ordinance.
Why don't we add the city solicitor to the referral?
Can do that, that's true. It works.
That's okay with you?
Yep.
All right, so the suggestion is regular course with referrals to the traffic agent, city solicitor's office, and the establishment of a public hearing on November 22nd at 6:52 p.m. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing date, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? By a vote of 7 to 0, the public hearing has thusly been established. Moving on to 16-22.
16-22, Council Vice President David Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Division 2, Prohibited Parking, Section 13-34, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets," by deleting in its entirety Crescent Knoll North Side from Lancaster Street, a distance of 50 feet west.
16-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs?
Yes, regular course with a referral to the traffic agent for the Lemmister Police Department, and we need to establish a public hearing. The suggested date and time is November 22nd, 2021 at 6:48 p.m.
Okay, so you've heard the request by the Chairman of Legal Affairs to give 16-22 regular course with a referral to the traffic agent and to establish a public hearing on 11/22 at 6:48 p.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing date, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is established by a vote of 7 to 0. Moving on to 17-22.
17-22, Elvis Velez of Viper Realty Corp., request a flammable liquids license for 48,000 gallons of Cookie Oil Class 3B at 6:45 Lancaster Street.
17-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the Lemmister Fire Department and the, I think, the Board of Health, or the Chairman of the Health Department is probably a good one as well. I'd entertain any other referrals people might have on this one.
Any other councilors have any suggestions? Councilor Angelini?
I think last time on flammables, we asked the Building Commissioner's Office for a recommendation as well.
Yeah, that's fine. You could add him to the list.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so you've heard the recommendation of the Chairman of Legal Affairs to give 17-22 regular course with referrals to the Lemmister Fire Department, the Board of Health, and the Building Commissioner, and establish a public hearing date on November 22nd at 6:45 p.m. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the public hearing date, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is established. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1st, 2021 with $19,904,602.80. We've earned $6,816.87 in interest, and that puts the balance at $19,911,419.67 to date and pending a few items that are on here for the first time. If passed, we will have spent $1,837,299.12, and that would leave us with a balance of And that is a financial report.
Any questions? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, I do, just for clarification. So in looking at the sheet, the dates on the left-hand side, the dates for these three appropriations communications that are on our agenda for this evening, right, today's the 8th, they're dated 11/4. That's confusing, right? So that should be corrected, because I think it's important that the document reflect the date that the...
The date they were filed?
That was the date they were filed, yeah, or submitted.
It's a filing date.
Right.
It's the date they get filed with our office for the agenda. I think that's when she puts them in, when she talks to them, because I don't, well, that's when we receive them in our office, when they have a discussion with the mayor about the money, every Thursday before they submit us to them, us by noon. And I'm thinking that's where that date came from.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at C-26. Oh, that's 2010-25.
I'm just assuming if they're passed, they'll update the dates to November 22nd.
I can chat with Jen if you want, and I can verify.
You know what? I would just like to be really clear about what that date represents. I thought it represented the date when we passed the communication, when we appropriated the money. You know, in looking at, you know, C-26, the date, the clerk's office is October 21st. So that doesn't, so there's no... twenty-first, so that doesn't, so there's no way to match this up with what's on the finance report. So it's just cleaning up, I think, what that date represents, and so we can be consistent.
I'll talk with her, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to finance. Yeah, C-26, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-26, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of fourteen thousand dollars be made to the prior-year school transportation line, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding final payment for COVID-year busing contract. As many may remember, we did come up with a settlement with the bus company because we had found a clause in our contract, and the city felt they didn't owe them the full amount. So they went back and forth and negotiated, and we had given them a chunk of money, I believe it was five hundred thousand, and that was supposed to cover the bulk of the rest of it. And I have a letter here from Jen Reddington basically explaining that the school has an annual contract with the bus company. Due to COVID, the buses did not run for the entire year, so the contract was negotiated. Majority of the final payment was carried forward and paid from the school encumbrance line. This is an additional amount to cover the remaining unpaid portion of the negotiated contract. So basically, that portion is fourteen thousand dollars, and this should be the end of it after this. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-26, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Very well, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Thank you. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-26. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-26, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? The petition, the communications granted by a vote of seven to zero, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order the sum of fourteen thousand dollars for payment to prior-year school transportation line, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Once again, this is regarding a final payment for COVID-year busing contract. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to Legal Affairs, is the chairman ready to report on seventy-five dash twenty-one?
I am, Mr. President. Petition seventy-five dash twenty-one, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of dumpster location and screening. We had a final public hearing this evening where the council accepted some minor edits to the petition and voted to amend the petition. My recommendation is to grant the petition as amended. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Yeah, we never voted on it, though. Okay. I don't recall voting on the amendment. I recall the motion being made, and I recall it being seconded.
It happens.
Yeah, that's right.
We voted on it.
I'm gonna go back and look at the tape. All right, that being said, Counselor David Cormier?
I agree.
All right. The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to grant the amended petition. Any discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, Counselor Dabrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Arninger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The ordinance is passed by a vote of seven to nothing. We want to see C-27, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication twenty-seven, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the acceptance of the easement between the City of Leominster and the North Central Investment Limited Partnership. This is essentially to allow pedestrian and vehicular access from Manning Ave. to the grantee property. My recommendation is to grant Communication twenty-seven. I'd ask you to...
We, no.
Oh, is this the one that we gotta take? We gotta further time this?
A letter from the mayor asking that we further time it.
Okay, yeah, he's got, we did, that's right, we did get a letter from the mayor indicating that he's got some legal work to do before we can pass this, so we're gonna have to further time this one.
Okay, and I assume Counselor Chalfo Zephyr, you're in accord?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I agree.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to grant C-27 further time. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-27 further time, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? C-27 has been granted further time. Moving on to ten dash twenty-two. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I'm batting a thousand tonight, but we'll see how we do with this one. Petition ten dash twenty-two, Revolutionary Clinics Two, Inc., seeks a special permit from the Leominster City Council to operate a recreational marijuana establishment used at one thirty Pioneer Drive in Leominster in accordance with zoning ordinance, Chapter twenty-two, Article eighteen, Marijuana Facilities, Section twenty-two dash one oh five. The recommendation is further time. We had to reestablish the public hearing so that we would have, give the applicant more counselors, including the Ward One counselor, to consider this. So the recommendation is further time.
Very well. So the recommendation is further time in the establishment of a new public hearing date of November twenty-second at six thirty P.M.?
Correct.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
I am abstaining from any discussion on this, yeah.
Counselor David Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant ten dash twenty-two further time and establish a new public hearing at eleven twenty-two at six thirty P.M.? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, establishment of the new public hearing date, please recognize the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of six to zero, one abstaining, the new public hearing is established. Moving on to twelve dash twenty-two, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition twelve dash twenty-two, City Council President Badanza and Vice President David Cormier, request to revise Chapter one, Section one dash eleven, entitled Wards in Precincts. The ray line is we are reprecincting updates to the map. The ordinance revision will become effective January first, twenty twenty-two. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. The city clerk gave us a summary, but essentially, this is something required by the state. There was a census done, there's been some growth in Ward One and Ward Three, so there's a shifting of populations. Most of it appears to be people staying in their respective wards but having to move from precinct A to B or B to C. There are some people moving from Ward Three to Ward Two or to Ward Four, and everyone is going to get a placard notifying them. Anyone who's affected by this will get a placard notifying them of the change. This is something...
Postcard, yeah.
Postcard. This is something that's required by the state. My recommendation, obviously, is to grant twelve dash twenty-two. I'd ask you to poll the committee.
Very well, Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twelve dash twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Dabrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Arninger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. Twelve dash twenty-two has been granted by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to Ways and Means, and C-25, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication twenty-five, a resolution vote of support to enter into a tax increment financing agreement, also known as a TIF, with Bisso Sweet Confections, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Bisso Sweet Confections, located at five fifty-four Willard Street, Leominster, Mass. I'll just quickly summarize the resolution. This is a Shirley company that is moving to Leominster, five fifty-four Willard Street, Leominster, Mass. They are going to be investing approximately two million dollars into the real estate over the next five years, and they are going to be increasing the jobs in Leominster and believe that this will be an increased economic development for the city, including additional jobs as well as industrial activity. And like most TIFs, this isn't tax debt that's forgiven, it's more or less tax debt that's delayed to, you know, for the city to partner with this company that's going to be investing in this city property and economic development. I did have one question, and I understand there are people from the city as well as from the applicant here, and I don't know if we could take a quick recess?
Somebody wants to move for that?
Can we make a motion?
You have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor of going into recess, please recognize usual manner. We are in recess.
So I don't know if people could just come in real quick. I just have one quick question. Probably take, and I'm sure it's a typo, I just want to clear it up. Good evening, and if everyone could just introduce themselves real quick.
I'm Karen Collins, I'm the owner of Bisso Sweet.
Okay.
I'm William Conner, Chief Assessor.
I'm Anna Curtis, Economic Development Coordinator.
Okay, thanks for coming down. It's greatly appreciated. I'm sure this is a typo. I just, in the cover letter from Ms. Collins, there's an indication that the company currently has forty-five jobs, and you expect to double that in the next few years if this is passed, which is wonderful. But just in our resolution, in the, I think it's, is it the third?
Third.
Where was it, David? The third, yeah, the third whereas clause, we just indicate the creation of an additional five full-time jobs, and I'm just, I'm thinking that's a typo, but I just wanted to clear that up. So it's just a typo?
Correct.
Okay, that's, no problem, that's what I thought, but I just, you know, I just wanted to clear it up. So I appreciate everyone coming down. And I don't know if any other counselors have any questions or anything at this point. Counselor Angelina?
I'd just like to say, we're our council with a sweet two.
I saw the smarties, I did not see the gummies.
We wish you best of luck in your venture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Anyone else?
I'm good.
No? Okay, I think we can go out of recess, and again, thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Okay, so we are back in session. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, and I just want to inquire of the clerk if this is something that I need to read?
Yes, please.
I knew it, okay.
I would also recommend making an amendment to the TIF to state the correct number for the employment so that it can be revised, and I can have you guys come in and sign it when that happens.
Okay. Now, am I reading the tax increment financing agreement, the proposed agreement, or am I just reading the resolution?
Just the resolution.
Okay.
Should I make that motion now so we can read it once the correct way?
I strongly encourage that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna make a motion that on the third, on the third whereas...
Yep.
It's gonna read...
Forty-five.
Bisso Sweet Confections LLC will invest approximately two million dollars over a five-year period and create an additional forty-five permanent full-time jobs for residents of the city and of the North Worcester County Economic Target Area ETA over a period of five years. I make that motion for that change.
Have a second?
Yep.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr, all in favor, please recognize usual manner. Okay, so that amendment's been made. Take it away, Counselor Dabrowski.
Okay, so this is a resolution, Bisso Sweet Confections LLC Tax Incentive Financing Agreement. Whereas the proposed project is located at five fifty-four Willard Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, which is within the boundaries of Assessor's Map Block Lot five hundred dash ten, whereas the City of Leominster has agreed to offer Bisso Sweet Confections LLC a tax increment financing agreement. Said agreement is hereby supported by the city council, and the tax incrementing financing plan is incorporated by reference herein. Whereas Bisso Sweet Confections LLC will invest approximately two million dollars over a five-year period and create an additional forty-five permanent full-time jobs for residents of the city and of the North Worcester County Economic Target Area over a period of five years. Whereas the city council of the City of Leominster strongly supports increased economic development to provide additional jobs for the city residents and industrial activity within the city, to promote and develop a healthy economy and stronger tax base, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Leominster approves the project application for Bisso Sweet Confections LLC and forward said application for certification to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for its approval and endorsement. Further, the city council of the City of Leominster supports the mayor to enter into a tax increment financing agreement between the City of Leominster and Bisso Sweet Confections LLC. Said agreement will provide for an exemption on property taxes based on the growth portion in assessed valuation of the property as follows, real estate. The agreement calls for an exemption from taxation specifically on the increased value of real estate property as a result of the redevelopment as follows in the tables shown below. The first called, the tax exemption formula, the first column is the year, and the second column is the percentage of the increment. Year one, July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, one hundred percent of the increment. Year two, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, eighty percent of the increment. Year three, July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, sixty percent of the increment. Year four, July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, forty percent of the increment. Year five, July first, twenty twenty-six to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, twenty percent of the increment. In accordance with the requirements and regulations established which govern the implementation of such tax increment financing agreements, this, the agreement will be in effect as of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, July first, twenty twenty-two, and will extend through fiscal year twenty twenty-six, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And this would be adopted by the Leominster City Council. I, we, first, I want to thank the Bisso Sweet Confections LLC for having faith in the city. I want to thank the Assessor's Office and the Economic Development Coordinator for their hard work in putting this together. The city's had a lot of success during my tenure on the council with these TIF agreements, and this one looks like a pretty good one as well, from my perspective. So I'm certainly in agreement, and I support this, and I'd ask you to poll my committee, Mr. President.
Very well. Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
No, I support it as well.
Thank you. And Counselor David Cormier?
I do support this as well.
All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant C-25.
Mr. President, I believe that that's a two or two member, it's Counselor Frida, who's not here.
That's right.
Counselor Dabrowski, myself, just for the record.
I had Legal Affairs on my mind, but that's all right. We could ask.
I apologize, but...
Pitch it for Counselor Frida.
I do support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No, if, Mr. President?
Yeah?
I just want to say that I also want to echo the sentiments for, you know, the investment into our city, and this happens to be my ward. Hopefully, there'll be some nice aroma coming out of there for the people that live down there, and it'll make people hungry and maybe bring them some more business. But, you know, I just want to, you know, let the taxpayers know as well that, you know, these things are very closely monitored, as we all know. You know, they have to live up to the agreement, and if, you know, if they don't, then it's all reviewed. So, you know, I think the protections are there, and, you know, hopefully, you know, they'll be successful and be able to create those jobs and continue to grow here in the city. So I definitely look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Very well. Any other discussion? Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last time we were down here for a TIF, I requested Assessor's Office. Stacana was kind enough to provide a spreadsheet to us that listed all the TIFs, where they were, in what year, and I was hoping, since he's here tonight, he could update, we do indeed pass this one, it's updated, you can send us a revised spreadsheet. Flexing those, and he just agreed, so I'm quite happy, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Angelini. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Counselor Angelini, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as y. Communication is granted by a vote of seven to zero. Yes, Counselor Cormier, I'm sure there'll be some nice aroma as we wafting into your room. Moving on to Public Service in 9-22, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yeah, Mr. President. Petition 9-22, Verizon New England Incorporated requests permission to lay and maintain underground conduits and man, and handholds with the wires and cables to be placed therein under the surface of the following public way or ways. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place two four-inch conduits on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Manhole 72A, located on the northerly side of Mechanic Street, and running in a southerly direction down Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 241 feet to a point, and then westerly to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Mount Pleasant Avenue, place one four-inch conduit on Mount Pleasant Avenue, beginning at Pole T dot three, located on the easterly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue, and running in a northwesternly direction along Mount Pleasant Avenue, a distance of approximately 120 feet to a point on the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. Howe Street, place one four-inch conduit on Howe Street, beginning at Pole T dot two, located on the northerly side of Howe Street, and running in a westerly direction down Howe Street, a distance of approximately 209 feet to the westerly side of Mount Pleasant Avenue. The reason is to place conduit to provide for distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. We heard from Verizon earlier this evening, Mr. Wallace, and our main concern at the last hearing was that we wanted to make sure that there was some communication between Verizon and the DPW, specifically in that area, having had some issues with other improvements that were done in the area. As Mr. Wallace reported and was confirmed by the email sent by Raymond Mercine from the DPW, they did, as the president explained, had a meeting of the minds, and the DPW does support this petition at this time. So it would be my position to accept this and to approve this petition, and ask you to check with the third member of Public Service.
Counselor Chalfo Zephyr?
I do agree with it, and the, receiving the information from the DPW is what clinched it. Thank you.
All right. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 9-22, is there any further discussion?
Just for the record, this does involve my employer, and I will be abstaining. Thank you.
All right. This is bicycle, right? Okay, seeing no further discussion present, all those in favor of 9-22, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of six to zero with one abstaining, 9-22 has been granted. Moving on to new business, we have none.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Just, I think this is new business, if we could just go back to petition 15-22 for a moment?
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Counselor Angelini for bringing up the city solicitor referral. I meant, I meant to thank him at the time, but we moved, we moved too quick, or too quick for me, but that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing, like, if you don't, if you don't catch that, you can create problems later on, so I definitely wanted to thank him as the chairman of the committee.
That's gracious of you, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Counselor Angelini.
It's quite kind of you, Counselor.
That's, that would be it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on the new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, and I guess I'll defer to the Ward Three Counsel on this.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. President. This had come to my attention, or somebody had asked me if I knew anything about the things that we had sent to the legislature earlier this year, so we have an, I asked for an item to be put on the agenda on the old business, and I'll read it so that people understand what we're speaking about. David R. Cormier requests a vote of the City Council to be taken to send a formal letter to Representative Higgins and Senator Cronin regarding the City Council petitions C-56, which was the civil service exemptions, and C-89, home rule petition that were passed by a vote of the City Council earlier this year. Just looking for an update formally and writing from their offices as to the status of these petitions that were sent to them. And I do want to thank Representative Higgins for, she already responded, so I guess we don't have to send, send her a letter, she is well aware that we were asking for this, and I thank her for her very quick response. And I can read that as well. It's dated November 7th, 2021, to Council President Padanta. I have learned that in tomorrow night's meeting, City Council Agenda November 8th, 2021, there will be a request for an update on H-3756, an act exempting the positions of police chief and police captain of City of Leominster from the civil service law. As you may remember from my last written correspondence on May 25th, 2021, the House Clerk requested an update, an updated home rule petition to be filed with the original petition. Since we have filed a new home rule petition, the public hearing was held on June 2nd, 2021. The bill was subsequently reported favorably from the Joint Committee on Public Service on June 21st, 2021. The bill was next reported out on the House Committee on Steering Policy and scheduled on July 6, 2021. The bill was then sent to the House Committee on Third Hearing, Committee on Third Hearing on July 7th, 2021?
Third reading.
Third Reading on July 7th, 2021. Senator Cronin and I will continue to advocate in our respective chambers to move this critical legislation swiftly. As you may remember, I currently serve on the Special Legislative Commission to Study and Examine Civil Service Law, which currently has a reporting deadline on March 30th, 2022. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any additional questions. So I just want to, you know, as a community leader, obviously, we are, you know, trying to find our way through the new police reform. You know, there is a lot of things in there, I've looked through it, you know, with accountability of the officers, from the police chief down, and, you know, we're kind of in limbo here, where we've had an acting chief now for a long time, and we're trying to get the captains back into the, into the mix. You know, so I think it's, I think it's critical that we are able to get, get a signature from the governor on this piece of legislation and be able to move forward and have our police chief and captains be permanent and know what their status is going to be, that they're going to be civil service or not. I know that there's been an agreement that's been hinged on these positions, and so I just would like to, I just want to, as a community leader and as someone who had passed this to get it sent to the legislature, just, not that I don't have any confidence that it's being done, but I just want to make sure that, you know, this is moving forward as quickly as it can. You know, I know things sometimes get lost, there's many people involved besides our delegates, members of our delegation, you know, and this might not be their biggest priority in Boston, wherever it's sitting, but if there's anything we can do to help drive the message to Boston that this is important to us, I'm certainly willing to help. Anybody can reach out to me if there's anything I can do, if there's a meeting I have to go to, or anything, I'm available and I'll make time. So I just want to, you know, wish Representative Higgins and Senator Cronin, you know, the best and hope that they can get this moving forward as quickly as possible.
I have a suggestion for you.
Sure.
My first suggestion to you, we had the acting chief and the acting captain here this evening, and I think they wanted to make their position clear, so if you wouldn't mind contacting maybe by email or letter Representative Higgins and letting her know that they appeared before us this evening. And I know that maybe the civil service exemption is the more, or higher priority of the two bills, there is another bill, and I appreciate Representative Higgins' rapid reply to the agenda item, but we don't have any status on C-89. So maybe if you could follow up with that. Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I'm going to paraphrase, we did have Captain Freyer here before us tonight, and he was kind enough to tell us, and again, I'm paraphrasing, but as far as police reform goes, the department is up to speed and is meeting all the requirements, all the criteria, and this council's been very supportive, as has the mayor's office, obviously. But I find that it's always fascinating to me that state legislature sends down unfunded mandates to communities, and now we're waiting for the state, state, to ratify this petition that we submitted back in June. So as we struggle to meet all these mandates sent to us from Beacon Hill in Washington, DC, we're waiting for the same folks so that, so we can move on and get this behind us. So I just had to bring up the irony, because to me, that's, it's just amazing. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Counselor Arndinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just concerned, you know, about the long delay period, and I appreciate what Representative Higgins did as far as, you know, following up and getting a good response back to us, but would it be appropriate that we put on our calendar to maybe revisit this in, say, 90 days, and if we haven't got an answer, to follow up a little bit more forcibly?
Well, I don't know if we have to wait 90 days.
Well, I'm just, I'm being generous, but-
You know, I know the Third Reading Committee is a powerful committee in the legislature, sort of a gatekeeper, so I'm sure that we can get some kind of response as to what's going on there. Maybe we could put this on, is Counselor Cormier saying you're the author of this, you have any suggestion as to when you'd like to revisit this?
Well, we have one, we have a meeting in early December.
Let's put it on the agenda then.
Because then we have a long, a long period of time before another meeting, early January, so.
We'll put it on the last meeting of the year. Does that work for you, Counselor Arndinger?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anyone else? All right, I think that concludes, unless anybody has anything on the community calendar, Counselor Arndinger?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. After a year's hiatus, the Rotary Club of Leominster in Pittsburgh is again sponsoring the Breakfast for the Bands.
Oh, great.
It'll be at the Pittsburgh High School on November 21st, from 8:00 to 11:00, and if anybody needs additional information, they can contact any Rotarian or myself, and we can give them the additional information. But it's a great event, and if you leave there hungry, it's your fault.
How does, how does the public get tickets, Counselor?
Pardon me? Oh, the public can get tickets, they can contact any Rotarian, they can go to the Leominster Rotary Club's Facebook page, Leominster Rotary, and there is a flyer on there with a QR code that you could use to just snap with your phone and do it online. They can go to any of the schools, the schools all have tickets, and any band member has tickets.
Can you buy tickets at the door?
You can buy tickets at the door, and they're $8 each, children are free.
Okay.
So it's a good deal, and like I said, if you go away hungry, it's your fault.
And that's-
November 21st, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM, at Pittsburgh High School, Arnhow Road.
Eight, in the morning, right?
Eight, eight, does it say, PM? AM, I'm sorry, it's breakfast, yeah, AM.
Breakfast for dinner.
Exactly, people do that all the time.
All right, 8:00 AM on November, Saturday, November 21st.
Sunday.
Sunday, November 21st.
Sunday, November 21st.
We'll get it straight.
Yeah.
It's a great event, and any members of the public listening, it's a wonderful support of the bands, so.
It really does, you know, the bands do a tremendous job, as the mayor's often said here in Leominster, and I'm sure in Pittsburgh also, as far as community response, so it's good to, I think we've given them over $100,000 since this started, so.
Well, and the Leominster Band just got, just won an award, right?
Yes, they did.
Was in the paper the other day. That's great. All right, anybody else have community calendar item? Counselor David Cormier?
I just want to go back to old business for a minute. My request is that we take a vote to have those letters sent, and I know that we still need some clarification, I know you had asked about C-89, so I just, I don't want to speak for the City Council, I know we've had people that have had issues with that before, but this is something that this body, you know, should, has been involved in, so I don't want to go off on my own either, so I'm just asking if we can take a vote, I can work with the city clerk, we can have a letter sent, I haven't heard from Senator Cronin yet, I can draft something up, we can send it out to the council, and if anybody has any issues with, wants to add anything or delete anything, we can go through her.
We can't do that by email. You can send out, you can certainly send out the letter, you're going to distribute it, but we can't create a letter through email. So if you want to frame a motion to send out a letter, you could do that now, if you get a second, we can vote on it.
Okay, so I make a motion that we send another follow-up letter to Representative Higgins and ask her if there's any different situation with C-89, and then I make a motion also that we send letters to Senator Cronin as well, to ask him his take on the, although I don't think they've made it to him yet, but just to ask him for his take on these two.
So to be clear, you're moving for the council to send a letter to both our state senator and state representative for updates on those two pieces of legislation?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second both.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize your usual manner. All right, by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, so one last thing, the city clerk reminded me, this Thursday, we have Veterans Day activities. I think they begin for the council on the common at 10:30, if I'm not mistaken, and then we move to the City Hall Auditorium for 11 o'clock. So obviously, we'll be there, and I, hopefully, members of the public, very important to recognize our veterans, and hopefully we'll have a nice turnout for that. Anything else on the community calendar before we adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn, Counselor Chalfo Zephyr, seconded by Counselor Arndinger, all in favor? We are adjourned.